Two. Yeah. Roll call of directors, please.
Baumann.
Here.
Zebrow.
Here.
Kalandra.
Here.
Zebrow. Jessica Maple.
Yes.
Kelly Zebrow.
Yes.
Donna Kaiser.
Yes.
Donna, Diane Gorman.
Here.
Peter Hanson.
Here.
Kevin Hermaning.
Yes.
Megan Stankowski.
Yes.
All present.
Okay, thank you. Item three, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Item four, Approval of the Agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
The motion by Kelly is your second.
A second.
And a second by Kalandra. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item five, Approval of the Minutes from the Regular Board of Education meeting March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. If there are no corrections to those minutes, I would seek a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Kelly. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Epstein.
Okay, with one abstention. All right, item six, Student Board Report. She's not here, that's right.
No, she's not here.
Okay. Did Diane want to take it, or are you guys okay with reading what was in there? Everybody received it in their board packet?
Mm-hmm.
All good?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, if you wanted to try.
I can't keep up with that.
All right. Moving on to special presentation. Seven A, Discussion Recognition of School Board Member. There you go. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Item seven B, Discussion on the High School Staff.
Okay, so at this time, we have a spotlight presentation by our high school music department. And we have Ms. Carla Dool and some students here to share some of the wonderful components to their music program. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having us. My name is Carla Dool. I'm the Director of Vocal Music at the high school. And I'm standing in for Tyler Schuster, who is busy at another event. I'm just a much shorter version of him, but we're both kind of tall. We have a presentation, is it not popping up? You need access.
I can share access.
Go ahead.
Somebody who's much more tech savvy than I am. When I started teaching here, we still use typewriters, so. Yeah.
They were.
Yeah, yeah.
They were. Yeah, they were. Hey, there we go.
Just use the arrow.
Just use it. Okay, I'm gonna use the arrow.
All right. So we're just giving you just a brief overview of some highlights from the year in both the instrumental and vocal music department. And I'm gonna turn it over to these wonderful band students. And why don't you guys introduce yourselves and we'll just kind of get going.
Sure, I'll start. I'm Chloe Moore. I'm a junior flute player.
Henrik Thompson. I'm a junior percussionist. All right. Some of the big highlights that we've had this year include the Simon Auction fundraiser that we held alongside our solo and ensemble showcase. At that fundraiser, we raised just under six hundred dollars. It was very good. We were able to put that money most recently towards a new drum set for the band, which has been long overdue. As you can see, it's this fundraiser and these other things have done a lot of good for us.
We've been really fortunate to have a couple of guests, clinicians, this over the last couple of years. But this year, we had two already this semester. We had Dr. Gabriel, who used to be a professor at W. E. Claire. She studied neuroscience along with music. So we got to learn a lot about practicing strategies. And then the current saxophone professor at Eau Claire, Dr. Vazquez, came and gave a master class to all of our jazz and concert band saxophones. So we got to learn a lot of different techniques. And we have two more coming this way.
This year, we had three students named to state honors ensembles. That was, one of them was myself, percussion.
I am in flute.
And Jackson Nahuda, junior as well. He was also named. That's a really big deal.
It's a huge accomplishment. There are over, well over four hundred kids that auditioned for these spots. And for three of them to, three of these spots to come to Mozzanee students speaks a lot for these students as well as our band programs.
For a little bit of perspective, you see Everest got one person. We have a jazz concert coming up this Monday featuring Summer Blue. Do you want to go a little bit into that?
Uh, yeah. They are a jazz ensemble from Eau Claire. They're made up of all college students, not all our music majors. That was the interesting part. Some of them actually are just minoring in music. But they're going to be headlining our concert. And then they're gonna play a couple of tunes with us as well. This year, we got to really focus on solo and ensemble events. We had thirty-six performed on like the instrumental side. And we got, because of that, we got to have our first ever solo and ensemble showcase, which allowed the students to show what we've been working on for so many months. We put a lot of effort in, and when we do our normal concert cycle, it doesn't always get shown as much, so. Yeah, so this is just a side-by-side comparison of some of the numbers from the last two years. So in twenty twenty-three, we had a total of fifteen events go to district, which is like local. This year, we had thirty-six, so we over-doubled previous year, which is amazing. Class A events, nine of those fifteen were the hardest level you can have. This year, we had twenty-four, which, to put it in perspective, there are not twenty-four upperclassmen in our band who enjoy playing hard like music. Like, there are a lot of underclassmen in there as well. So that's not just improvement for Henrik and Ice Class, it's also the underclassmen as well. Fifteen of those events in twenty twenty-three qualified for state. This year, twelve of ours qualified. And six students went to state in twenty twenty-three. And this year, it is twenty-three.
These are just some of our perspectives on the, like, kind of how the band has interacted with the community more recently. Probably the biggest thing is that there have been zero drops between first and second semester in students. And that's like, you know, a band's an elective class, something that's difficult and it's not required. And you really only need, I think it's like, two or so fine arts to graduate. So the fact that this year, we've had no kids, none, not even the freshmen dropping, I think really shows how we've grown overall. And we've been able to really help people improve in a really meaningful way.
That transition from eighth grade to freshman year is not a easy one. And that's, we made a lot of changes to our band camp program, which basically, before school starts, we'd get together and work on some of the stuff. We'll be performing pretty early on in the school year. And some of those changes we made were to the music and how we practiced it, performed it. But it was also a lot of band culture. We did a lot of band bonding and community bonding. And it allowed, I feel like it allowed a lot of freshmen to get really comfortable really quickly, which I think overall made them feel better about staying.
Right. And with that as well, we've had, at our most recent solo and ensemble showcase, we invited a lot of staff from the schools and parents and other people like that not directly involved with the band to come out and watch. And we had a lot. We've actually gotten some feedback from teachers like Mrs. Bradford, who have been saying like, this is a really good way to get people, like, the community much more involved in band. And we think that overall, music is something that really helps people as individuals learn and develop. And so we're glad that this has been able to really spread out to more, to more people.
Yeah, along with that, we have listed up there woodwind brass and percussion ensembles. Kind of how, to, how I interpreted that is usually each year, we have a couple of leaders in each section. Like, for example, like Henrik and I have been leaders in our flute section and percussion section for a while now. But it's really nice to see every section developing like a strong leader, whether they are a junior or senior like us, or they're even sophomores and freshmen getting ready to lead a section. That bigger sense of responsibility is growing, not just for marching band and concert band, but also, I think not just as a musician, but also just as a member of the band as people.
And I think the final thing that we wanted to cover is that we've noticed a trickle-down effect from our high school to the middle school program. We, I think the most notable thing this year is that we've really pushed for auditions and learning like specific scales and things like that, because those are very fundamental to improving your musical abilities. And Ms. Canetter has gone through with her, with her students, and she's really encouraged them to push through and learn those scales so that they're ready for the more advanced things that come to band. So overall, we have not only improved the people that are already good and experienced at band, but we've really helped foster a community that allows those that are new to band, are new to music, and want to learn, but just don't know how yet. We really foster that community. We're helping, we're helping this redeveloped to much more people.
The last thing I'm gonna add to that is that band community is, we're not just in Mozzanee anymore as much. Something really great that our band has been doing is reaching out to other band organizations in our area. So the Central Musicians, Central Wisconsin Musicians, which is a community band, that's held at the Point Campus in Wausau. Four members of our high school band are there. And that's really great, because we're getting that community outreach. We're looking in, we're with people from all over, but a lot of kids our own age and a lot of band directors in the area, so they help support also, which is really great just for all band programs in the area, not just our own. That's all for the band?
Okay. That's great. We're having none.
Okay, Chamber of the Guards. Thanks, Chloe and Megan. Trying to bring one from each section, but kids are really busy nowadays. And even these guys are on a time crunch. Why don't you introduce yourselves? Say which choir requires you sing in, what grade you are, and what section you sing in. Tom, why don't you start?
My name is Tom Son. I'm in varsity choir and concert choir.
And what section do you sing?
Oh, yeah. I sing, I sing bass in concert. And I sing, and I kind of shift around sections in varsity singers.
Hi, my name is Bradley Schwartz. And I sing in both cantabole and concert choir. And kind of like Tom, for concert choir, I mainly sing alto too. But for cantabole, I just kind of jump around from part to part.
I'm Alana Wolfgram. And I sing in concert choir. And I mainly sing alto, but I'm filling in for soprano today.
And then I'm Colton Venner. And I'm in the concert choir as well. And then I sing tenor.
So they're here to kind of help go through some of these things, highlights from the vocal music department. As you can see, our band department is very involved. Our choir department is as well. So I'm gonna have Colton, why don't you start at the first bullet and kind of, well, just pass it down the way?
Yeah. Variety show was super successful and it was a lot of fun. The theme was, yeah, Back in Time, like it says up there, featuring a lot of classic hits from the sixties, seventies, and eighties. And a lot of people that came to our show had a whole lot of fun. They were clapping and they were even like joining in with us on some of the songs.
And what did you sing?
Oh, I sang crocodile rock.
And he looked like Elton John. It was great fun. Maybe you saw him, maybe not. All the students were featured in the show in multiple ways, so. Tom, why don't you take the next bullet down?
Okay, so we participated, we participated in the Great Northern Conference Honors Choir. And I was a part of that. It was a really fun experience, kind of stressful, but like in a good way. We had to, we practiced a bunch of songs and then we had to perform them all by the end of the day. Not memorized, but.
With a college professor?
Yeah, with a college professor. And we, yeah, and we learned a lot about, about kind of different strategies that, to sing that we hadn't been fully taught before.
Great. Bradley?
Okay. So our concert choir got a really great opportunity. The UWSP choir, they invited us over to perform with them. And it was just, it was a really cool winter concert. It was just like, we got a workshop with the professor of the choir before we even sang with them. And it was just such a great experience to learn from that, like, kind of level. I mean, Mrs. Dool, you're amazing. We love you.
I am not a college professor.
But it was nice to like see that difference, perspective and add it in too. And it was just a great experience.
Yes, absolutely. Alana?
We were invited to perform with the sixth and seventh grade choirs for their spring concert on May seventh, which I feel like will really give them like the opportunity to see what like is ahead of them for choir, if they're looking to do it in high school. And I feel like it'll be cool for us too, just to like get in touch with people that are younger than us and just like see how they are progressing with choir.
Colton, you want to take that first?
Yeah, we had a lot of, a lot of, or we had a couple of students from our school go and go into another production, a really big community production by Suede, The Beauty and the Beast. I don't know how many of you guys have seen that one, but it was really, really, really well put on production. And Bradley, you were in there, right? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We had choir students and one of our band students was, were on cast and crew. And we went and did an all-choir field trip to support them, as well as experience a live show at the Grand Theater and what that, you know, what the next level can look like, because we do what we can do, but they really take it to the next level. And it was really, it was fun to support the other fellow high school kids from all throughout central Wisconsin, but to support our all ensemble is a good thing. Tom, why don't you talk about solo ensemble?
Um, so, okay, so we.
What is solo ensemble for choir, Tom?
Oh, yeah. We, we, we have a lot of different things you can do in solo ensemble. So there's, there's the classical solos, which are, which are us performing classical songs. That, then there, then we have all the ensembles. And theater solos, I, I perform the theater solo that, yeah.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
You bet. I'm gonna take it over for you. Okay. Our students, like the band students, that I'm so happy that they have such an improvement in the number of kids that want to be involved. I've always had a lot of kids involved in solo ensemble. They just really enjoy it. And it's such a good experience to work with these folks one-on-one. You know, they get, you know, mini voice lessons. And we talk about vocal pedagogy and history and theory and all the things that we want to talk about. From the choir, sixty-two percent of all choir students were involved in some aspect of solo ensemble, and I do not require it currently. Sixty-eight vocal events is what we had total. They all competed in class A. Fifty-nine of those events received a score of a one, with thirty-six of those fifty-nine qualifying for state solo ensemble. And all students opted to go, knowing it was gonna be a lot more work, but they're, they're fired up, so I'm really happy about that. all students opted to go knowing it was gonna be a lot more work, but they're they're fired up, so I'm really happy about that. Um talking a little bit, I guess I wanted you guys to share from your point of view because I can say choir is great all day long, but people expect me to say that. Um can you each share a little bit of why the being involved in the choir program is important to you?
Um yeah, I can start.
Sure.
Um I think the biggest key thing was I'm really in, music has always been a really big part of my life, but um like being able to harness my voice and being able to go out and sing with other people has been um really just a joy to kind of figure out it's um not really an experience that you can find much other places. Um like even in a band, it's a different feeling than being in a choir to be singing with other people and to blend into create these these sounds that you can't get with one voice, you know? It's so cool and it's helped me to really expand my own vision and expand what I thought I could do with my own voice.
Alana?
Um yeah, choir is a really big part of my life. Um I didn't really think I'd ever be in choir, but I tried it out freshman year and I like instantly loved it. Um it really just gives me like the time of day and it like lets me like, I don't know, like get away from all the stress and anxiety of homework and projects coming up and it just like gives me that time like to myself, to be myself and like get to know tons of people that are seniors, juniors and freshmen too. Um and it's just like awesome, like solo ensemble is a big thing for me. I personally like it. I tried it my freshman year. I did pretty good and this year I tried a bunch of other events for it too. I did um two group events, uh like ensembles. I did a duet with my younger brother. I did a musical theater solo and a classical solo. And I definitely recommend people to do it and I'm going to do it next year as well, but yeah, I think it just gives like like everybody, I think you guys can agree, like time to just get away from like the stress and the worries of like the outside, I guess, but yeah.
Bradley?
Um I kind of, I really wanna agree with you about like just getting away from all the stress. Choir, um I've always grown up in around musics. It's always been involved, like no matter what I did. But like joining, coming, being here to high school, to the choir, it's just like, it feels like home and I don't get that like in a lot of other classes. You don't get the, I'm trying to think of a word, you don't get like the bonds with all the students, even the teachers, like how you do with like another class or something. And it's just so great to just like meet people like you were talking about and just bond.
Thanks Bradley. Tom?
Um yeah, choir is kind of, choir is kind of like, it's a community that you can't really find anywhere else. And I, and I personally, I'm uh I'm obviously really socially awkward. I uh am socially anxious and choir's helped me build up a lot of confidence that I didn't have. Um I like, I probably couldn't, freshman year and especially eighth grade year, I probably couldn't stand in front of an audience like this or um I di- I didn't Elvis solo. I, yeah, uh during uh during the variety show. Um freshman year, I probably, I probably would have a panic attack on stage, like. Choir's helped me and I feel like a lot of other people's helped build up a lot of confidence in ourselves.
That's great, Tom. Good. Um community outreach, the students don't even know this yet, but we've been requested to go to some nursing homes and share music, so we're working on scheduling that. Um we are also involved as well as a few of our band kids in the Evening of Elegance that's coming up this weekend, Saturday, so they're gonna get to share some of their solo ensemble things um with those folks from our community, so that's always, we're always well received and they're always just the most wonderful, gracious audience. And one thing I wanted to point out that um is is probably easier for choir than for band is we have a very inclusive atmosphere because all differently abled students can enroll in choir and do enroll in choir and it's it's wonderful to watch those students grow musically. It's really wonderful to watch them grow socially. And for them to be embraced by kids that are just in the regular classrooms all the time. Um they frequently say that, you know, choir is their favorite class when sometimes they're maybe not sure what page we're on, but it doesn't matter because they're singing their hearts out and it's awesome. Um so thank you for the opportunity for us to share instrumentally what's going on, vocally what's going on. Please come to our concerts. There'll be a million of them between now and the end of the year. Um and we just thank you so much and thank the board for your support of the music program. It really is we could not do what we do if we didn't know we had your support, so thank you so much. And students, thank you so much.
And you guys don't have to stay for the rest of the board meeting. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to item eight, public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to participate is identified. By speaking correctly, there were no nobody that signed up for public forum, correct?
You're correct.
Okay. All right, moving on to item nine, the consent agendas. At this time, if nothing is being pulled from any of the consent agendas.
Oh, we got a few.
Okay, that's what we're here for. Go ahead.
What we got? We got six, um six C. The Community Use of District Facilities Fee Schedule Update.
Okay.
And then also six D, Approval of the Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Five Bus Fees for Paid Riders.
Okay, so you're pulling those two items? Off and you're bringing them to the full board?
Yes.
Okay. Um anything else? Okay, Kevin?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items six C and D from the Finance and Building Committee.
Okay, we have a motion by Kevin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Amy. And questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Okay, then we are going on to item six C from the finance, which is the discussion and possible recommendation for the community use of district facilities fee schedule. Peter, uh Megan?
Megan's, Megan's committee, so.
Um, sorry.
Well, and Michelle, perhaps do you wanna jump in? So obviously, I'm sure you all got a lot of uh calls about it. Um namely, I think uh sports teams, you know, in particular, concerned about being charged the use of our gyms, fields, et cetera. Um from how Michelle explained it, and she can pop in here. Um that that would actually not be a change, that any of the booster clubs, am I saying this right? Any of the approved booster clubs that we accept in the beginning of the year would, those fees would be waived and that this is written up in such a way so that they can use a certain fund for it.
Yes, yes, policy, board policy seven five one zero. Um near the end, I, item A, item A. Fee, no, fees, under fees and charges for use. Um school support organizations which are authorized annually by the board action shall be scheduled up to fifteen hours a year of building use outside of the regular scheduled custodial hours. And then also, um that's a, speaking to those booster clubs and I do have um what was presented to the board in August twenty twenty-three, the booster clubs that were endorsed by the board to use those facilities. And we would just, you know, have a form that we would just waive those fees as we have in the past.
Okay, okay. Megan, do ahead.
So I guess we brought it through uh namely because if it was just in our committee, people wouldn't know. I think that they believe that they're going to be charged and then that costs is I'm going to go on to every kid who wants to participate and of course, we don't wanna do that, especially to our taxpayers. They already paid for the facility and their taxes, right? Um so I guess if we want, we didn't take any action. If you want us to take action, do you want to somehow convey that information? Or do we wanna make sure that our booster club list is what we need it to be? You know, so that team sports clubs aren't getting charged? You know, I know that we see it come through in the beginning of the year, but I don't remember what's on that list. You know, what comes through.
Right.
But it has to be of an approved booster club. I think there's just a lot of misunderstanding from all of our points. I think that, you know, we won't be able to afford this.
So what I'm hearing too, because I received, we need more clarification.
Right.
That's all we need to do. Yep, so there isn't all this confusion.
And just to make sure that that is in fact what it is and that in fact, no club sport activity is going to be charged use of our facilities.
Well, and could you not put that in the form of a motion? Or did you wanna bring this back and have it to a full board discussion?
We wanted to have a full board discussion. Um I, because of course, I'm not I I I didn't have time to go through and find the booster clubs. I'm not totally.
I didn't know that until.
I'm not, I didn't know that till our meeting also, that if, that this is essentially no change. Michelle, so you know, um.
I guess shouldn't there be some sort of mention of that?
Of that on the sheet.
So that people understand that too?
Yeah, you know, saved a lot of ruffled feathers and.
Yeah, I agree.
Um so I don't know if if the the full board thinks that we could we want to ask Michelle to rewrite it up and clarify and make sure, or if we feel comfortable voting on it as is. I I personally think it needs to be written up and and with more clarity as to what it is, who it is and.
And where it's coming from.
And where it's coming from, good, okay.
So you wanna pull this back and bring this back for May?
Yeah, let's do that. I'll make a motion to postpone until the May meeting for the full board.
Okay, so we have a motion by Megan. Is there a second?
We already have a motion on the floor. But it wasn't voted on. Um it was the, by Kevin and Amy to approve the consent agenda.
Right, but we pulled those two items.
We pulled those two items.
But the consent, but the first motion has to have a vote.
Oh, we did, we did.
Yeah. Not a individual.
No, we don't have to individual vote, but we we did.
Okay. What she's saying is she didn't, she's, either we didn't vote, which you're saying we did.
Yes.
Or it just wasn't yet noted in the minutes.
Yes, and so it's no, yes, we did vote and it did, so we're good. All right, so we do. Yes, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
By Megan and a second by Peter to bring back item six C for the community use of district facilities.
And I'd like one, I would just like to have who's ever looking this over, I know it's more than just Michelle. Just to double check the pool rates and the auditorium rates to make sure that we're not too high to where people won't want to rent the facilities and they'll go elsewhere.
Pool rates and?
The auditorium rates. Okay.
I think an example, like on the auditorium, we're going from, what is it? So much per hour to um a lump sum, what's the average normal amount it's rented for? Are people actually saving money?
I mean, it's nearly triple.
Saving money?
And Megan, that was for the full board meeting?
There's both. There's hour and per day rate.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And we'll bring that back as well. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. All right, and then item six D, discussion and possible recommendation on the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five bus fees for paid riders.
This was the other one that I'm sure you you received um communication about. Um I guess we, our discussion came to, you know, if if the goal is to completely eliminate city bus riders, this would achieve it because you're almost tripling the cost. Um if the goal is to recoup some of the cost because gas is four dollars a gallon and whatever, you know, I think it needs to be done. The, our committee agreed it needs to be done more gradually and this is far too big of a jump. Um we did go through and discuss, you know, e- the kids who live on the other side of the bridge, that's unsafe, so they get a bus ride, but one fifty-three crossing over to one fifty-three is also, and and unless we're going to pull back up that safe rights to school, unless we're going to put a a designated crossing guard at that place. You know, the option of adding a bus stop on that side of town and doing one pickup or even possibly doing bus stops within the city and you have to get to that to to ease, I guess, you know, the the bus drivers having to stop that, you know, I don't, my kids don't ride the bus. I don't know how it works in in the city, but I think that's kind of where we were. I think everyone saw the sticker shock. When you see that, you think, you know, I know the district needs money, but infla- uh inflation affects everyone and that's, we felt too high of a jump. And so we wanted um maybe some additional options to be brought back. Um so I would make a motion to postpone till next month to bring back to the full board um with some different uh cost options. And also maybe some creative ideas where if we add, you know, the one stop on the other side of one fifty-three or you know, stops amongst towns, something like that, where we can um, you know, maybe add or or even just a family fee, right?
It's a long motion, Megan.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Motion to postpone to next month with different options. And, yeah.
Different ideas.
I'll I'll second that part of the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll check it out. I I'll make, I'll say it slowly.
And since we now we have more discussion, I think another question I have is, we have the base on seventy students per bus, but I think there was a a comment that we only charge per family. I wanna confirm that because if families got four kids, twenty-five hundred bucks.
Also, uh you know, how much money are being collected from city riders? Um how much money is being billed to city riders? How much of that money is actually collected? Who's collecting it? The bus garage isn't collecting it. Who in the district is collecting that? Are are they even paying that bill? But you know, we don't know.
One, and it's just not city, just so you're aware. Um it's also students that open and roll into our district. They have to come to the boundary, boundary line to to ride, so they also pay, so it's just not city.
Well, we have him here tonight and he told us in our, after our meeting, he opened and rolls from Rochelle.
Yep.
His kids, they get up, they go to Storybrooke.
Book?
Book.
Uh they ride the bus in, but to get them, they have to ride the bus then back, right?
Correct.
And to add that cost.
Right.
Onto him, and he's already getting his kids up that early and we certainly don't wanna lose kids who are opening, rolling into our district because they can no longer afford to bus them to the daycare. I mean, you have to think I think there's other ways for us to make money and not put it on to our.
I think ultimately it goes to even our closed session discussion of
Yes.
our staffing plan and just how are we gonna fund our our deficit.
Kevin?
So I'm gonna vote no on the motion. Because I feel that it's incumbent on us to decide whether we are going to accept the administration's recommendation, which it sounds like the committee didn't. And if the committee didn't, and you're asking the board then to decide. The board should either decide, are we going to accept the administration recommendation, or how much of the actual cost of operating the bus, which is six hundred and seventy-five dollars per year based on seventy students per bus. Do we as a board want to spread out on the rest of the taxpayers as opposed to only the city residents who utilize that service? So we've got to do it eventually, one way or the other, right?
Yep.
We have to make that decision. We set it at zero, we keep it at two forty-eight, or we increase it to there's really no, we could charge more than what the daily cost is. I'm not suggesting we should. I won't support. we could charge more than what the daily cost is. I'm not suggesting we should. I won't support that. You aren't in support of the six eighty-seven, so where is a desire of the board to have some number set where it is now, keep it where it is, reduce it, or increase it, and by how much? You know, is an increase, uh, to three hundred dollars appropriate? Is that too high? We know we have a responsibility as a board to reduce the costs of everything from personnel to, um, overall expenses that are not being recouped through tax dollars, but as, and, and by the way, I, I despise the idea of government bodies pretending that a fee isn't a de facto tax. It is. It just tends to go only on certain people who utilize certain services or choose to play sports, or choose to go to Solon Ensemble, and we heard about that tonight. There's a cost to that. That's not borne by the district. Part of it is subsidized, right?
Yes.
Um, but not all of it. And so we, it's the same with, I mean, the only thing that it hasn't been that way the last few years is the lunch program until during COVID, but that's changed again now. So we have to decide, I mean, did, I guess that, I would ask the finance committee, did you guys talk about what would be a feasible potential increase?
No, because we didn't have all of the facts. How much does it cost for that bus?
Well, I didn't know you didn't have this information until just now. I'm sorry.
Well, it's there, but how, how much does it really cost us for that bus? I mean, we should.
Because those other students riding.
Yeah, I mean, there was discussion on, is it one or two buses, but then we're hearing it might be almost a full bus that only picks up a few of the kids, so there's not, it's not a.
Is it one bus for all city kids?
Yeah.
You're spreading it out amongst other buses? How much are the fees coming in? How, how much are they even paying?
Are we making money on it? Are we breaking even? I don't know.
My comments are a few different things. Um, number one about the, the contract, and this is a Michelle question. So correct me if I'm wrong, but the gas prices are locked in with the contract. They don't flow.
In our current contract, that is correct.
We do get a rebate if they're less than the amount in the contract. So what, what, do you happen to know the lock-in rate currently?
I thought it was three dollars and something.
Three dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, okay, so there we have it. So it's not going up with, with inflation. So it's good that we have that contract. That was my first question. My second question is, what is the intent of, of this number? How did you come up with that number?
The intent for this number was to, um, I'm told that if we put all our students, a hundred and fourteen roughly, on a bus, on buses, it would take two full routes at forty-eight thousand dollars per year um, that we're not getting any state transportation aid for. So the idea was to start recouping some of that cost. This is the cost if they were all on the same route. They're not all on the same route. So I do agree that, you know, that information needs to be looked at if you want to know what is the true cost. But, you know, the trans, it depends on how many students a route. Um, transportation aid is given certain dollar amounts per mile over two miles. So there's like two to five miles or two to four point nine nine miles is one rate. So we would actually have to see the cost or the revenue that's coming in for each route. We would have to look at how many miles each student on that route is being transported.
How long has it been since we've increased these?
These have not increased since I've been here, so at least five years.
Oh, it's been probably more than, I think before Brett was even here, I think it's been that same.
So. If I could just finish a couple of my comments, I also think so, to that point, because we're, we have a motion and if it passes to postpone it till next month, that would be a request to come back with really what is it going to cost for these buses according to the, the numbers of students that are going to be driving this because, riding this? Because, um, I'm not going to support that, that type of an increase. We, we will lose students coming in. And number two, I think we're, or number three, we're putting the cart before the horse. Because I think it is incumbent upon us to wait for the survey results from the perception survey, which is a piece of this financial equation to see what the community, the current taxpayers even want to support for our district as a whole. So that is a piece of that as well. So by next month, we should have that data.
Yes.
And then we will know, um, in a little bit more research of what is a more reasonable increase.
Okay, and I, and I will tell you that it would, we can give a rough estimate of what that cost is because like I said, each route, if there's a route with only students who are being transported five miles, the revenue coming in from that route is going to be different. It's going to be lower than the revenue coming in from a route where people, well, the expense would be higher too for a route with, where kids are going twelve to seventeen miles.
Well, and Michelle, you just mentioned a hundred and forty, did you say? The way it's, it says on here seventy students. Well, two buses, seventy students per bus. Again, there was discussion on, are we talking per family, per child? You know, it, it's not all defined here. I, I cannot justify sending a fourteen hundred dollar bill to a family with two kids. I just can't. Now, maybe it needs to be six hundred or seven hundred. I, I don't know because to me, I don't think we should be, we, we need to know more facts on what this is costing.
Yeah, I can say this too, from when we, the district is required to transport um, or to give a parent contract to parents who transport their students to a private school. And that is calculated based on all of the students who ride the bus and then, um, divided, you know, the cost of the transportation of those regular routes. And that is roughly, um, eight to nine hundred dollars per year is what we pay to them. So that's roughly the cost of transporting us to go on our routes.
I'm not saying this is the wrong number. It might be the right number.
I mean, if you're making, if you have three kids or two kids or whatever, and they're stopping at the same stop, pickup, drop-off, I mean, I think the charge should be per family, not per student, for one thing. And as far as an increase goes, I mean, I just think, you know, just based on, you know, everything that's going on in the economy, I think just a ten percent increase is fine. Because that, you know, that's only twenty-five dollars more for the year. And, you know, I'd kind of figured out before that, you know, that equates to going from about twenty-eight dollars a month to thirty dollars a month. So that's really, you know, not too bad then.
Something challenging with the Mozeney School District, okay? The state has formulas talking about sparsity aid, so we are a large geographical area district. It's a challenge with, uh, transportation. We're too big to be qualifying for sparsity aid, either tier one or tier two. So, uh, it came up in the instructional program committee, the art of negotiations and looking for uh, negotiations with different entities that we contract with. Um, so perhaps there are things we can negotiate. We're at that point in time right now to negotiate a transportation. This is not on the agenda, so we're not talking about it specifically, but we're talking about cost savings. Um, so it's an opportunity to at least look at, uh, you know, what, what our costs are and to look, look at that carefully.
And like, do we have an average cost per student for busing? And are you legally allowed to reimburse a family to bring their child to school? Which then, maybe we pay them, but it's cheaper than busing. And just, you know, again, we need to be thinking outside the box with this kind of deficit that we're looking at.
Kevin?
So if I understand the information that's on the screen right now, if we have about a hundred and fourteen paid students, paying students, and the cost is two hundred and forty-eight dollars a year, it's about twenty-eight thousand dollars. If it increases to six hundred and eighty-seven dollars per person, a hundred and fourteen students, that's seventy-eight thousand. It's a fifty-one thousand dollar differential. So the board has to talk about.
Can I stop you there for a second?
Yes.
That hundred and fourteen though, is, that was per family, so somebody's a hundred and fourteen might be a family. So you have to fit, you don't know what that number is. There could be a family of four, a family of two, might not be a hundred and fourteen. You might have to cut that down to.
Are we charging per kid or per family? I don't even know.
We charge per family.
We're, and that, what I did is pulled a list in our skyward of the fees of how many people we've charged. So charging per family, we're charging a hundred and fourteen families. Thank you for clarifying that, Diane.
Oh, so that is.
And then the cost.
Okay.
Okay, so that's not really the number of students, the number of students is more than one fourteen.
Yes, yes.
That is correct. So. I'm sorry.
Well, okay, well. If that's, then the math still holds where I was going with this. It's still a fifty-one thousand dollar gap that this proposal would fill in our, whatever the shortage that we're projecting for the next school year. And this district need, this board needs to decide how much of that, is the number about eight hundred or six hundred, whatever the number is. It's all going to depend in part on enrollment, right?
Yes.
So whatever the actual number ends up being, should this be where fifty thousand of that shortage should come from? And how much of whatever the shortage is should come from this stop, stop gap?
Exactly.
This is a fifty thousand dollar hole that would be plugged if we did the maximum. And I don't, I don't, I'm not hearing any appetite to go to the maximum. I would say to Amy's point, you know, the idea of having a per-family amount, which apparently is what we're doing. Okay, to me, that doesn't make sense. To me, it doesn't make sense. I understand Peter's point, you know, we want to be appealing to citizens to locate here, for people out of the district to open and roll here. But for every student that we are paying for a seat, all right, and they're paying for part of the seat out of pocket at the family level, that's an extra, eventually an extra one or two or three buses that we have to operate every day. Right? And so then you get to the point that Megan is talking about, well, do you say we're not going to transport and we're just going to hire a crossing guard and that's going to cost us, you know?
This right here is going to make that decision for us.
And that's the point.
Well, you probably won't have that number.
That's, it'll be zero.
Yeah, you won't have that. I'd say.
If I was a family, I'd be already texting all my friends of, who can take my kid to school for me?
That would be.
And Michelle, does that take into consideration some of the families that, uh, like free reduce of the class is half?
I did not take into, those are part of the one fourteen though, yes. Yeah.
So it could be less than what your number really is as well.
That is correct.
Do, what?
Which means the gap is bigger.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what is the ultimate goal for increasing this cost? Is it to cover inflation? Is it to help reduce the number of students? Because I'm, I'm sure we're proud, I'm sure it's hard to staff bus drivers, would be my assumption. You know, like what's the ult, you know, that fifty, what, one thousand dollars, does that go towards?
Well, ultimately, we would have our buses full so that we're being efficient and then recouping, you know, that transportation aid from the state and then those students who were not, um, being transported um, because they're outside of the area to walk would be paying, you know, and if our buses were full and we were creating new buses for these families, this is what it would cost. This would recoup the cost, not add extra.
So are you saying that currently you use buses from the outlying routes that aren't full to pick up some of these kids?
No, the, the, a lot of these are, again, because some of the buses coming from outside are coming in and picking up open enrolled students that they meet within district. But then depending, we have one, two buses that are on this side that are picking up the in-town city riders. Then we have two more over here.
So you're not taking buses.
Nope.
Out of the yard specifically.
So we should easily be able to figure out what does it cost per bus on this side of the river? Per day, per year, I don't know.
How long is our current costing contract locked in for?
Another year.
Another year.
Year and a couple months.
Yeah. So then after that, we'll expect to see the three fifty probably go up.
Mm-hmm. I think so. Like I said, I can, I can look at that cost and bring that back.
Could happen.
What's the total?
The twenty-two, twenty-three cost for a student on our buses was eight ninety-seven.
What, what was that?
Eight ninety-seven for, you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the DPR requires us to calculate the actual cost of a student on our bus, buses. In twenty-two, twenty-three, it was eight ninety-seven.
A year.
A year.
But that's like counting kids out by me and Timbuktu.
Yes.
So. How, how does this?
We're too big for sparsity aid, which to me is a funding formula flaw at the state level.
How does this play into our current deficit?
This would add to the current deficit. This would be for future, um, you know, it'd start for next year and it would help cover the cost of transportation. Some of the cost of transportation.
It has no effect on our current deficit?
It depends on our student enrollment. Basically, we are looking at having next year's deficit covered. This would maybe add back to, um, budgets for some, um, departments. Is what it could do, or add to, you know, fund facility, um, upgrades.
I, I think, Michelle, is there a way too that you can possibly, this is coming back next month, that we can look into, um, because we had talked about this years ago. You know, when every student is leaving that building, when elementary leave and going to the middle school, are all their fees paid? Same thing with middle school transfer into the high school, are all those fees paid? So that, you know, even though this fee might be onto their accounts, are they paid? Because if we're increasing cost and they're not paying, it's not doing any good. Yeah, yeah.
You're, you're assuming it's going to the next month. We haven't voted yet.
We're getting there.
Not on sixty, correct.
What is the current reimbursement rate? Is it around fifty-five hundred per, per student?
Uh, the reimbursement rate for.
Just generally speaking, for, per child enrolled?
I thought it was eleven thousand grand.
Eleven?
You mean for open enrolled students?
Yeah.
Regular red.
Regular red. People live here.
Maybe about seventy.
A hundred thousand.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All right, so we do have a motion and we have a second to bring this back for May. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so passes with one no. Well, I'm bringing that rule here. Kevin? Okay, thank you people. All right, item ten, discussion and possible decision on the approval of the monthly voucher list.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So a motion by Peter, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Megan. Roll call vote, please.
Bowman?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hermaning?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Kalandra Zebro?
Yes.
Kelly Zebro?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The next is discussion and possible decision on the acceptance of the monthly treasures report. I would seek a motion.
Make that motion.
We have a motion by Megan. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second by Peter. Roll call, please.
Bowman?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hermaning?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Kalandra Zebro?
Yes.
Kelly Zebro?
Yes.
Motion will pass. All right, the next, we're moving on to old business. Twelve A, discussion and possible decision, approval of the second reading of the policies twenty-two, thirty instructional program course guides, policy sixty-six, ten, non-district support student activity accounts, policy six-six, one-one, district-supported sponsored student activity accounts, and rescinding policy sixty-six, ten, student activity fund. Again, those are all in your packet for you guys to review and look over prior to the board meeting tonight, so I would seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And a second by Kelly. Discussion? If not, all those.
I have a question. Um, how come, I see that the policy was removed for the tornado emergency information.
Oh, that's not the, that's not the.
Oh, we're the wrong one, okay.
Yep.
That's a, okay.
That's a gamble.
Got it.
That's okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item twelve B, discussion and possible decision on the approval of the Mozeney School District joining lacrosse co-op team.
Thank you. Yes, we have our athletic director here. Trevor, take it away.
All right, so this is, uh, sworn information that was gathered from, uh, our previous meeting. I went off and I talked to the other athletic directors and stuff. Um, if we were to join the co-op, uh, we would be responsible for a quarter of the cost. Uh, the other schools in the co-op is DC Everest, La Salle East and La Salle West. Um, this is based on twenty-four games, which is the maximum for both boys and girls. So, um, transportation would roughly cost about nine thousand dollars. So transportation would roughly cost about nine thousand dollars. Officials for the year would be about nine thousand dollars. Entry fees for tournaments and stuff would be about two thousand dollars. And then the coaches would cost about ten grand. So that's about thirty thousand dollars but four ways, which would be about seventy-five hundred dollars for both boys and girls teams. So that would be about thirty-seven fifty for each team. We did the survey for the parents. We had seventy-four, sorry, forty-seven people respond. Of the people that said yes, they wanted to join lacrosse, we had five seniors. Or sorry, we had five respondents that were senior parents, two said they would wanna join lacrosse. We had five parents. And then two said they would be interested, sophomores were three, said they were interested, freshmen, there were three that were interested and of the eighth grade students, there was twenty-two respondents and nine said they would be interested in joining lacrosse. In high school, five of the students currently play a spring sports and five do not. Three of the students of the five said they would quit their current sport to play lacrosse and two said they would stay in the sport they are in currently. All high school students would be able to secure transportation to practices and to get on the bus or to go to games at those schools. And all the high school students said they would be able to obtain their own equipment. As far as the eighth grade students are concerned, seven of the students currently play spring sports, two do not. Three of the students said they would quit their current sport to play lacrosse and five would not. All the students but one said they would be able to secure transportation. All of the students except for one said that they would be able to afford their own equipment. So moving forward, we have a decision to make today. Both DC Everest and Wausau School Districts will, are willing to add us to the co-op if we approve it. DC Everest School Board Meeting is tomorrow. They are going to sign their contract and turn it into the WIAA. Wausau is scheduled for the twenty-second. If approved, we can sign the forms tonight or tomorrow whenever we have time to do it and then I can submit it before May first. Anything else?
Thank you for this work.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve us joining the now number five ranked team in the state, but the lacrosse co-op.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Peter and a second by making discussion. Kevin?
Do we? Do you know the approximate number of girls who participate in the storm program? And what our approximate LAs of the district each year?
There were, there's four, there's five girls on the storm and that was twelve thousand dollars for just the girls hockey.
And, okay, thank you, and do they, does the district cover equipment and/or transportation?
That is included in the twelve thousand dollars. They, they pay for their own equipment, they pay for their own equipment. The transportation and cost and everything, that would be like the seventy-five hundred dollars for both boys and girls. That, hockey's a lot more expensive because we have to pay for the ice time.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
I know.
So this, the, the money for that that was estimated there, that would cover the transportation, officials, coaches' fees, everything else. And the kids would be responsible for their own equipment and to get to practices and a game.
Would you mind bringing back to the financial element of this? Thank you.
And this will be based on max games, this is the most games they can play. And they don't play max games right now.
So then we, we would have to have the coach also?
Coach is already hired.
Okay, alright.
It's just like the storm, it's our share of being a part of the co-op.
Yep, yep.
So is that actually seventy-five hundred times two?
Nope, that's for both.
That's for both boys and girls.
Okay.
And when it says transportation, what, what does that mean, since they're supposed to be responsible for their own?
Well, that's getting a bus going to the school.
Getting them to the bus.
Getting them to the bus that goes for it.
So our kids are responsible, let's say it's DC Everest, sometimes they might even pick us up here. But let's say our kids have to get to DC Everest, parents have to take them or themselves. And that would, that bus then would go to Nina or would go to Appleton or.
Go ahead.
You and I were part of the creation of the storm on this board. And it was a risk, right? Those numbers of participants over the decades have gone up and they've gone down. And with the larger number of eighth graders who showed interest though, wouldn't be able to participate if they're not willing to give up their current sports, which also applies to the other grades. First of all, this doesn't lock us in beyond just one year.
Is it one or is it, is it a two-year treaty?
It'd be one more year just because they're in a two-year cycle.
Okay.
So that we'd be joining the second year.
I see.
So we would be back a year from now making the same decision.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Otherwise, it's a two-year agreement, okay?
Lowers the risk.
Yeah, it does. And it also gives our other students, but also, it gives our other students the opportunity to consider whether they are interested in this sport. But it also could result, well, it would based on what we read in the data. It would result in fewer number of students in whatever sports they're currently in. So. We might have some other teams that are gonna be short kids or?
You know, if there's only a couple, I don't, I don't think they're gonna be hurting.
I think every child has the right to choose what they.
No, I agree with that too, well, of course. But I thought the number was like fourteen of the kids. Let's go to the next screen. No, the other one.
Seven of the students.
No.
Three of the students quit.
Twenty-one.
This one, yeah. Oh, this one, yeah, that one's not that helpful, so.
Yeah, so it wasn't, there was twenty-two, that was the respondents, twenty said that they weren't interested.
But nineteen said they're interested and how many would not?
So nine, there was nine that was interested, so seven said they would currently.
Play.
Three said they would quit out of the seven.
Three eighth graders and how many high school?
It was very few.
Three and three.
Yeah.
So when you said seniors, is it actual seniors or is it juniors going to be seniors?
When, when we implement this?
So, again, last time we were just doing high school, we're added asked the seventh grade currently.
Okay.
So these are the numbers of students that will be next year.
Okay, okay.
So when you say seniors, they're currently the juniors.
Wonderful.
Eighth grade is currently seventh going into eighth.
And additionally, is this just a survey, so this is parent survey results, so the parents are committing to this, it's not just the kids?
It was, it was a parent's. Came to us.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah.
Alright, so we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
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 Get into it, what's the vote?
Hand vote.
I'll vote in favor of it, actually.
Okay, I think it was four.
Then it's five, four.
I'd recommend a hand vote or, or.
No, it was one, two, three, four, five, and it was one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just having it.
It's two, five, four in favor.
I'm a little bit difficult right now when we're asking parents to pay seven hundred dollars by the bus and then.
No, I.
And then we're gonna just throw away, well, it's not a lot of money.
No, and what, what I think's gotta be reiterated too, it's only gonna be a year.
A year.
Year, one year, let's see.
But the year we're already eight hundred, I, I voted yes, okay.
I get what you're saying.
It's also one percent of our shortfall.
Yeah.
Right.
It all adds up.
I, that's my, I, one percent, seventy-five hundred is one percent of seven hundred fifty thousand. Okay? And I, and by the way, I'm not saying only one percent.
Right.
I'm saying it's one of the one hundred we need to fix.
Right.
Right?
But I would just recommend that we look to make sure that these costs are very, are accurate next year coming back. Because anything could change. Transportation goes up, coaching goes up, I mean, everything goes up.
My, my biggest thing, we already approved this, so we shouldn't, I, we should be moving on.
Yes.
But my problem is, are we gonna have seven kids going out for this and they're all gonna be sitting on the bench and we're paying a quarter of the cost? That's my issue.
You'll hear it.
Huh?
And then you'll hear it, we'll hear it next call. Alright, yes, motion will pass, five, four.
I will say we do have JV team, they have enough for JV team already, so.
Alright.
Thanks Trevor.
Yeah.
Thank you Trevor.
Okay, five, four. Item twelve C, discussion update on 4K slash childcare.
Okay, Ms. Jolynn Schmidt, we'll be discussing some of the updates from our 4K program and combining that a bit with our early childhood special education services as well.
Alright, hello. I am here tonight just to give you a very brief update on where we're at with 4K. I believe at our previous board meeting or a couple times ago, we discussed kind of where we were at with the community survey that we had given out to 4K, had been in the process of opening up enrollment and we are now in the middle of that piece right now. So I'd like to just give an update on where we're at with enrollment, also where we're at in regards to childcare and then just kind of where we're at with, with future needs and where we're headed. So with enrollment, as of yesterday, we were at ninety-five students that had enrolled. We, that continually is changing by the day. So I looked again today and one more had enrolled, this is kind of prime time, so I foresee that we will continue to have enrollments over the next few months. This is promising as this is already more than where we're at right now. We're at about ninety, eighty-nine maybe this year, yep, so, or right now currently for a 4K class. So we had a smaller group this last year. So it, it is really, you know, promising to see that, you know, this number is at where it's at right now. With, you know, the, the hopes that it's gonna continue to increase over the next few months. We are, just to recap, planning to continue the programming at Mozeney Preschool, Mozeney Elementary, Storybook Kids, and then Head Start, we have a partnership. So we do have two AM, or excuse me, two sections, so an AM and PM at Mozeney Preschool. We also have an AM, PM at Elementary and then an AM class at Storybook Kids. And then Head Start is structured differently because they are full day, so that's part of their program. Looking at childcare, so that was something that we had discussed with our community survey and that was definitely shined through that there was a need for that wraparound care piece. In the placement form that is part of the enrollment process that families fill out so far, as of just the other day, thirty-seven had expressed that there was a need for wraparound care. Seven of those had secured it with other in-home daycare, so we're kind of looking at that and like where those are located. Thirty had already secured a spot with Storybook Kids and then or, or in need of a wraparound care, so a few of them had already secured that and a few of them had said we don't have it yet, but we are in need. So that's part of what we're looking at is replacing them. So Storybook Kids, just to kind of go through, and I apologize, that should say fifty-seven, not forty-seven, so that is my mistake. So Storybook Kids could actually support fifty-seven at their current site. So that'd be like a twenty and a twenty in the PM and then like a seventeen in the AM. So that is in their current facility. If we were to go above that number, that fifty-seven, they could add the additional spot at Mozeney Preschool and, and be able to support seventeen childcare spots there. At this time, that doesn't look like that's needed. If, if that changes, that is an option. So I feel very confident that with the childcare provider that we have that partnership with, that we'll be able to support families in the wraparound care that they need for the upcoming school year. Questions about childcare, because I know that's a big piece of this? So moving forward, kind of now where we're at with, with this piece is we're gonna continue to push out the enrollment information. Social media blasts, flyers, all of that, continuing to encourage families to enroll, answering questions, talking with families, promoting our program. And then the goal is to work on completing placements based on student needs, but really looking at childcare and transportation. The goal is to take that midday transportation and really dwindle that down so that we don't have as much of that midday transportation. So looking at childcare, how can we make it the most cost-effective? So that's, that's what we're in the midst of, kind of that middle piece right now is, is looking at that. And then the goal being to communicate placements to family in the beginning of June, so. Any questions on goals? So I'm feeling very hopeful about where we're at right now with still a lot of work to do with the placement piece, but that we have the, the classroom teachers and spots available that we need and the childcare piece too, so.
So we're like ninety now, this year ninety-five so far, what were the past, let's say, five years and hours?
Sure, anywhere from, I, I think, hundred to a hundred-ten. So like, if we can, you know, I, I do foresee that we'll, we'll be very close to where we've been in past years. If we kind of continue, you know, when we look at past years as well, April, May, June, we, we do see enrollments, we do. No matter how much we push it out, it, it seems that that, that does happen, so. But I, I foresee us being real close to where we've been in past years.
And our goal is to attract and retain families. And I'm, I'm very confident once families get into our wonderful early childhood 4K program, see the joyful, rich learning that's happening, the high standards of instruction, just the quality education, those families will stay. So that's why we're taking, having this time and effort to really, you know, bolster, bolster those numbers. It will help us with our three-year rolling average for students, which we know is so important for basing our, our calculations on with our state aid. So thank you, Jolynn.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thirteen, new business. Thirteen A, discussion and possible decision approval of the employee's benefit for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Yes, so Ms. Jamie McDonald from M3, a valued partner here with our, our district for quite some time. Will be sharing with you some of the work being done with our benefits and to talk through and answer questions related to our recommendation for our benefits for next year for employees. So Jamie, thank you for being here.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me, I was at my son's track meet and I can say I'm really glad that.
Yeah.
Kept saying if the wind was behind them, they'd be breaking for my big tonight. So I'm Jamie McDonald, I've been with M3 for fifteen years. I've worked with the district as your broker for the last, I think, three and a half years. And we'll go through some of the information here that we've been working on. So with your administration, Michelle, Stephanie, and then the insurance committee, we need to go over your quarterly reports, so how are you running basic things like the premium that you're paying into your carrier versus the, the claims that they're paying out? What's driving cost, what are some things that we can do to educate staff on making good decisions and, and what goes into that loss ratio? So this is just kind of an overview of some of the things that we've discussed. We went over direct primary care, that's becoming a popular thing in our area. I don't know if you've heard of Astia, Lake, or Anovia. So we talked about all three of those. You're fully insured right now, so, you know, working with one of them would be an additional cost at this point because the way that they work is a, a cost per member per month that would be on top of your, your premium right now. We looked at some apps that can help price out care at the provider level, so things like Healthjoy and Garner. Did some educational materials on prescriptions, how to find low-cost options and to price out prescriptions. And then did multiple RFPs, I think we've almost RFPed every year. And a lot of that is due to, to how, you know, you've run and what the renewals have looked like. So since we've started working with you, this is just kind of a, a premium versus total claims paid to give you the, the loss ratio each year. You, you have run over a hundred percent three out of the, out of the four years. So, you know, the, the renewals, we've been able to get them down even considering the loss ratios. The first year it was at a zero. The second year we moved to Aspirous Health Plan at a three. The third year, we, we got the twelve down to a five on, on the plan design option. And now this year, we're, we're looking at the initial renewal coming in at a seventeen percent. So that's where we're starting. So that's where we're starting. We did take that out to RFP, this kind of gives you an overview of what the RFP results look like, so.
Can you explain a little bit, just RFP, does everybody know what's being referenced there, just a quick explanation?
Yep, so request for proposal. So we basically take your last two years' worth of information, so your claims versus premium, your last two renewals, and then all of the carriers take that information and give us, you know, their proposal based on what they view your risk at. We did also look at self-funding this year, we looked at a captive. We had a very hard time getting stop-loss, because you had, you had a one-point-three-million-dollar claim on your plan last year. So that's going to, you know, shy away from a lot of the stop-loss carriers at this point and make self-funding look a lot higher than the fully insured bids at this point. So, your first proposal, WCA, Wisconsin Counties Association, I believe you had them prior to me working with you for a year. They came in at a ten-point-five. That is UMRs, the TPA that processes claims, they use United Healthcare's network, Broad Network, Aspirous Marshfield, everybody's in, they're at plus ten-point-five. Aspirous Health Plan lowered your seventeen down to an eleven-and-a-half, saying, "We want to keep the business," but we did take a big hit last year with that claim. Security Health Plan came in, their narrow network, which is Marshfield only, is at a minus three, so below where you're currently paying. Their Premier, which is their network that includes everybody, Aspirous, Marshfield, UW, Mayo, was at a plus nineteen. WPS and Anthem declined a bid, based on the risk. So just to give you, when you're looking at the networks on all of these, you know, you have a broad option, you're currently with the Aspirous, what they view it called their narrow, it's not really narrow though, it's basically everybody but Marshfield that most of your people have. So you have seventy-eight percent of all of your paid claims going through the Aspirous system. You have four percent going through UW and Madison, and you have three-point-four-nine percent going through Marshfield. I know one of the things that came up, or that we were asked about, was cash and lieu, how, you know, it compares in the area. So I just listed, you know, the districts that we work with in the area with some comparisons here. It's kind of all over the board, we still have some that are at zero. We have, our highest one is listed at eight thousand. And then, just kind of, you know, overview of the market. The market has changed dramatically over the last couple of years. You know, if you think about, we used to have three providers in the area. We had Aspirous, Marshfield, and Ascension. Ascension is no longer here. Marshfield bought St. Joe's, Aspirous bought all of the, basically, hospitals left. You know, Marshfield was going to merge with Ascencia, not to be confused with Ascension. That is no longer happening. You know, they previously in 2019, were going to move it, or merge with Gunderson, that didn't happen either. So three systems now down to two, really down to one that's large in our area with, you know, Aspirous is the only one in Rapids, Aspirous is the only one in Merrill, they're the only one in Rheinlander. So they're really kind of taking over, you know, the market in so many areas, which you can see based on your utilization is also happening here. So just to show, you know, these are things we keep our eye on, it's kind of a moving target, because things are, as we know, WA is out of the market. You know, that used to be when we did an RFP, WA was the top one that came in for schools, they're no longer in the insurance business. So we have less options when it comes to providers, and we have less options when it comes to insurance companies. So it's putting it in a harder market, which does not bode well for schools that are struggling on their budget. So I understand that. This is where we're at right now, based on the risk. Any questions for me? I wish I was here to talk.
I guess I do, it really has nothing, but just curious, like, maybe one day in the future, a self-funded option like Astia or something like that? And can you explain, like, so you pay per member, like, a membership fee, and then what about for a big claim? Then you get what as to cover, you know, let's say, I go in to Astia, I, something happens, I need to go to Aspirous, then you have what coverage for that?
Yeah, so you would still have a self-funded plan that you would use a TPA for, like a UMR. You would purchase stop-loss. What a lot of, you know, employers do when they do the direct primary care, like you're talking about, is they raise the deductible. So they say, instead of a two-thousand-dollar deductible, we're going to have a four, but everything is free when you go to our near-site clinic. But then you still have the insurance part for those that are having babies or having cancer, you know, that have to go into the system.
Okay, folks. Looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion, do approve as presented.
We have a motion by Peters, or a second?
I'll second.
A second by Donna. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure?
I guess.
Okay.
What did you just approve?
The ten percent, and then no changes to the dental program.
Yes, no changes to dental.
It was also in the finance as a link.
Okay.
Okay, and in personal.
So the WCA plan? Is that right?
Yes. Okay. Thirteen B, discussion and possible decision on the acceptance of the statement of board of canvases for the spring election.
I'll make the motion to approve the board of canvases for the spring election.
We have a motion by Kelly, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Amy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item thirteen C, discussion and possible decision and approval of fee changes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Sure, in your document there, you had a couple of fee change suggestions, possible decision here tonight. Want to mention that the parking fee, that was something that came up with our safety committee back this fall, lots of conversation in relation to, we want to encourage our students, for a variety of safety reasons and public relations, to use our parking lot. And so, the rationale behind that is to make sure, or to encourage students to park in student parking, so that's.
Not the streets.
Not the streets. So that's the rationale behind that.
That's why they were parking in the streets?
Well, there's a variety of reasons that students park in the streets. And Chief, one time pulled over or talked to a student and said, "Well," said, "Well, why don't you park in the parking lot?" Or the student parking, and, "Well, there's this fee," and so it's really, we need to encourage that. So that's the rationale there. And then the written communication class.
Two gallons of gas.
Say it again?
Two gallons of gas.
There you go.
They use that sitting idling, listening to Four Songs, but anyways.
Yep. Well stated. Written communication class recommendation from the high school, there's an online textbook cost with NTC, and so it's a recommendation to have that added as a fee. And then eighth grade tech ed, digital arts, a fee of ten dollars to offset, it won't cover all of the cost of the eighth grade class, but it will certainly help with some of the programming that we're doing with our middle school art.
Make the motion to approve.
Please, we have a motion by Jess, and a second by Donna. Any questions?
I do. Are we responsible for the maintenance? We're obviously responsible for the maintenance in that parking lot, right?
Yes.
Do we know how many, how many permits we get a year?
I don't off the top of my head, Peter, but I can certainly find out, I'd like to let you know.
Just adds up the life cycle cost of replacing an asphalt parking lot, it's not cheap.
I, do we cover all of that?
But it's a couple hundred.
No, they did it, they just redid that lot.
Just say, you just want to do it again twenty years from now.
But we didn't do it, the city did it.
I think we don't cover all the cost.
The city did it.
Oh, well then, okay. I just want to make sure.
Steve, did you do it?
Steve knows the answer.
Who did it?
Well, remember, that half that student parking is our lot, right? And align the rest of the city by the right center. But since we work in conjunction so nicely with the city.
Yes, we do.
I mean, with the city, we help pay proportion of that, we're quoting that, because it felt was a fair thing to do for all parties. So, there you go.
My point, when you do it every twenty years, these fees would help offset that.
Yes.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one, no one. Item thirteen D, discussion and possible decision on approval of the elementary, middle, and high school handbooks for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Yes, so in the past, I, we've heard, hey, we want to have coordination between the handbook development, and so I'm happy to report to the board that there's been increased collaboration, all the principals, myself, sitting down, working through, to have more commonality. So I just wanted to note that. And we also did hear the board last year, the year before, we want to see proposed changes, and I think it's easier for you, Amy, I think your last meeting here, you'll appreciate that even more.
Yeah.
To note, and we're sure going to miss you, Amy, I know that's a little editorial. But, yeah, so looking at the handbooks, just wanted to mention that the process from the administrative level, I think, is improved, and we're open to suggestions on keeping improving that. One note, just, I wanted to mention again, connection with the safety committee, development of policies, there's verbiage included to ensure that students know the severity of making claims, threats, false accusations against adults, that's very serious. So telling the truth, we really stress honesty as a core value with all of our staff and students, and that's reflected in this handbook, so I wanted to stress that. That being said, I'll just have you take a look, and you guys can discuss what you see there, and if you have any questions, let us know.
The only thing I had brought up that Amy and I, we met earlier, was on the false accusations against students or staff. I think we need to make it a little more broad, because you have coaches, volunteer coaches, drivers, how are they all protected?
They're not considered staff?
No.
Yeah, clarity I think is needed, because I think people think staff are just the teachers and the teacher's aides, the counselors, but I think that you absolutely should have the coaches and volunteers, because you may get some individuals that simply volunteer in the classroom. And then drivers, because they're an extension of the classroom.
I have an admin team meeting tomorrow with our, to follow up on board agenda items, among other things, so I'll stress with the principal group tomorrow.
I don't want to make it too wordy, but somehow encompass these people.
Yeah, encompass all groups that you had mentioned.
Then we have people coming in to volunteer to read.
Yep. Volunteers, coaches, parents, bus drivers. Got it, thank you.
Any other?
Are we asking questions?
Yep, no, yep.
Okay. So, back to my original question. How can we remove the tornado emergency information for parents?
Where was that, Glenda?
On page five.
I don't know the answer to your question. Brad, any insight on that?
Yeah, we aligned it with the other handbooks. When you look at that, it's kind of, when you read the, please don't pick up your child from school when there's a warning that's lifted. But the warning is lifted, if a parent wants to pick up their kid, do the parent excuse them? We can't stop that. We thought that was like, I would just put it there.
Sure, yeah.
And regardless, you don't call school, the lines must be open for emergency communication. If we're sheltered in place or evacuating, no one's going to be there to answer the phone. So, I do kind of like, why put that there?
Yeah.
Obviously, if we're available with speaker parents, we will. And then number three, if the middle school building is damaged during the tornado, we'll be evacuated? Duh. Right, like, of course. And so it just, if you go down, we wanted to make it more succinct and just align with the language that we have in our curriculum.
Sure, I understand that, but I personally would love to see a little more direction for parents, especially after, you know, the incident we had this year. I don't, I mean, I understand that, though, I think that that's good, but.
Yeah, with that, like, on the cellphone, I don't want kids having their cellphones being used during classroom time, it's disrespectful to the teachers. But I know in that event, it would have been, there was a lot of anxiety that was caused by some of the kids not having their phones, when, in a matter of seconds, they could have grabbed them when they went over.
It also might have caused a little more confusion in the whole process, too.
I agree, I.
But that's when you rely on the messaging system from the superintendent, who will do a mass blast via Skyward email.
Text, because we do text now.
There's got to be a consistency, I guess is the word, because some kids had them, some didn't.
I did hear that, too, it was a little bit.
And sometimes the students give incorrect information to their parents, and the word gets out, and then we, there is more confusion, and there's more, what would you say? People, yeah, you know, hyperventilating, because, you know, what really is going on, you know? So, you know, if they can be a little patient and get the information from the correct sources, we maybe avoid confusion, pandemonium, all of the other kinds of things that happen.
I had one question on the middle school. Where it says, "Students may only use their personal device before the start of school until seven-thirty AM." What time does school start?
We start our classes at seven-fifty, so when the first bell rings. We have kids in supervised areas after the seven-thirty bell.
Okay, so I guess I'm kind of confused why they would not be able to use their phone until the class starts, because it says, as you read on, they can look at their phone in between classes, but you can't twenty minutes before class starts?
Yep, seven-thirty bell hits, they're going to be in their locations that we have them there. And then, we have some locations where kids hang out in the cafeteria, and they say that they're eating breakfast, but they're really not eating breakfast. We want to get them in, get them fed, and get them out to their spots. So to be succinct and just clear with everybody, that seven-thirty starts.
If you read, there was an article in the school news, in the magazine, about cellphones and parents, which was rather interesting, the consensus of parents and school personnel.
I think, Amy, what you're, what I'm hearing you say is, if school doesn't start till seven-fifty, why can't they use their cellphones? But I'm hearing Brad indirectly say, if they're in the building after seven-thirty, they are in school.
Cool, yeah. But they can look at their phone between classes, correct?
Yeah, so the purpose here is to get them out of the classrooms, to keep them in their lockers. And we understand that the kids need, it, kids, they have this need, and I'll quote around the word "need," to look at their phone, to give them that flexibility to look at it in their locker, when they're in passing, we're fine with that. But it stays in their locker, and this is a big shift for our building, because we've let them, carry them with them. So there's going to be a lot of learning, not only from the kids, but from the adult side. So we had to put some parameters around it, and we really tightened it up. And this came from our building leadership team, as the way to, you know, go at this full force. We did model after a couple of buildings in Warsaw, and it is what's written, as you can see, so. We're trying to slow it down, just because we want to increase engagement, and we want to decrease bad behavior with kids that are using phones in a way that they shouldn't. Increase student engagement, better opportunity for learning. It's healthy, it's an old window of, how much screen time?
Any other questions, otherwise?
Just one item, just as a matter of editorial update, then, with action taken earlier about the lacrosse. With action taken earlier about the lacrosse, then that needs to be added to the high school for the sports.
Thank you. If there are no other additions or corrections, I would seek a motion. A motion by Kevin is your second? Second by Amy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry.
Amy, you're going to come back next year and consult the board on updates.
We'll just send it to her.
We'll ask Kurt to do the edits for us.
Yes, do the edits.
Item thirteen D, discussion only, Act Twenty Board Report.
Okay, so many of you, all of you, I'm sure, are hearing bits and pieces about Act Twenty, a major change in education in the state of Wisconsin. So, starting now, and continuing to move forward, we'd like to have a regular board report. Maybe it's quarterly, maybe it's twice a year, whatever you'd like, to keep you all informed of our, our work to prepare for this. And to stress that we're not a school about compliance. Yes, we, we want to comply, but we're more about getting at the spirit of this law. And that is to make sure that all students have access to programming to allow them the opportunity to read at grade level, which we're really excited about this work. So, thank you. We have Kathy Butala. She is our reading administrator, reading specialist for the district. And Joann, what a pleasure to work with Joann, is our co-director of instructional programs this year. And they will lead us through a conversation on salt and pepper. Guys, if I start jumping in too much, say, hey, we got this. So, without further ado, thank you for being here, and Act Twenty Report.
So, thank you. We want to start off by saying, our, our goal here is really to update on kind of where we're at, at this time, with Act Twenty. And also really highlight that it is ever-changing on a daily basis. So the information that we're sharing right now is the latest information up to this point. But it's continually evolving each day. So, first, first thing we'd like to draw attention to is talk a little bit about curriculum. And so when we're looking at Act Twenty, through Act Twenty, there was an Early Literacy Curriculum Council that was created to take a look at curriculum. And Act Twenty states that the council will review literacy materials for alignment to the definition of the science-based early literacy instruction, and that is found in Act Twenty. And so they wanted to present a list of recommended early literacy curricula to DPI based on their review. As of right now, the council has approved these four curriculum resources. And they will be continuing to add to this list on an annual basis. So this is just kind of the, the starting off point, that these four were, were the approved curriculum. I want to highlight as well that these are all comprehensive curriculums. At this time, this council has not reviewed supplemental curriculum resources. So these are all encompassing curriculum resources. And when we look at these resources and look at kind of funds available, there's been a lot of talk about funding and reimbursements for these, you know, particular curriculum resources. At this time, there's like this fifty million dollar allocation of funding that we're looking at. But just to kind of talk through what that means, that fifty million is not just for the curriculum piece. There's a lot of other components that are going to be a part of that. That would cover salary and benefits of the Director of Office of Literacy. It would also cover sixty-four literacy coaches statewide. It would cover our statewide screener, and we'll get into that in just a little bit here. The remaining dollars, after all of those things, would be looked to be split equally among curriculum and reading training for teachers. So not just the curriculum resource, but also the training piece. So when we look at all those components, maybe twenty percent of the curriculum that we would look at potentially purchasing down the line would be reimbursed. So just kind of putting things into perspective, when we're looking at, could this be a possibility down the line?
Operative word, maybe.
Yes, you know, so we'd like to highlight the things that we're currently do, doing right now, and then kind of look at, you know, what does that mean moving forward? But this is just where, where this particular council is at in taking a look at those curriculum resources.
And every DPI presentation that I've been at, the answer is always, it depends. So whatever we ask about funding, there, it depends, is really what it's coming down to. So with that being said, Act Twenty also put into place, what does early-based literacy instruction need to look like? And so there are some components. Instruction has to be systematic. It has to be explicit, and it has to contain the nine components that you see up on the screen there. So for districts that do not have, currently, one of the four that they had recommended, we need to look at our curriculum. And what we need to do is take this DPI curriculum crosswalk, and we need to look over all the pieces to make sure that we're having all of those components within our instruction. And so just that little piece on the bottom there, so the required component would be the nine components. There's a definition of all nine. There's two analysis questions that we have to ask, and those are, do we have a scope and sequence for grades, for grades five K and three that outlines grade level standards? And the second question is, do our lesson and unit plan apply the gradual release of responsibility to develop the following components, whichever one? Then, what we have to do is the next part is we have to rate it. Is it evident? Is it somewhat evident, or not evident at all? And then how we answer that will show us the next steps that we need, what we need to do next.
So the gradual release of responsibility is an instructional approach. Fisher and Frey were the two main authors of that, who are well-referenced with reading programs. But it's the whole idea of a model for teaching, where teachers model explicitly. There's explicit instruction. And I think at the state level, that was a concern that maybe brought about some of the change with this law.
Thank you. Currently, we have multiple resources to meet the nine components. So we will be using the crosswalk to look at those, all those pieces that we do have. And that work is currently in progress. We received this in March from DPI. So that work is currently in progress to be done before the beginning of next year, the start of the school year. And this work is also going to be done alongside the teachers as well. So we have our first look at it, our second look at it, the teachers are all involved, or will be involved in that process as well.
And just to reiterate, a lot of work has, has been done before this was put out. So teachers have been committed to really looking at our reading curriculum resources and working on aligning them to the standards. And really committed to this before this piece, before Act Twenty even came out. You know, a lot, a lot of work had happened up to that point.
So this year, our teachers have been in implementation with our UFLY Foundations, which is the word recognition piece of Scarborough's Reading Rope that says, it, it really just says that students need both that word recognition and language comprehension together to be successful readers. And so they've been in numerous hours of professional development to be able to implement that, and, and for our students. So that would be our UFLY Foundations piece and our Hegarty piece, so.
And some of those in-service days have been utilized for that. And we've had trainings throughout the year with that as well.
Yes.
The UFLY implementation.
Yes, absolutely.
So all of that work is very fruitful, no matter what resource, either the district chooses to go with, or the state chooses. That's positive work in implementing any program that we choose to implement.
And they're also working with aligning CFAs, which is Common and Formative Assessments, and their summatives to the standards. So, and again, that goes to what Rob says, that no matter what we choose, all of that will go along with whatever we choose. So it doesn't need to be changed. Oh, see again. Okay, in Act Twenty, we also, there's also a piece that requires teachers to begin a reading trainee, training, that meets the state's criteria, and is approved by the Literacy Curriculum Council, and is endorsed by the Center for Effective Reading Instruction, which has a list of accredited independent teacher trainings. And so we need to pick from that list as one of our trainings. So we've started that process. We are looking at accredited training programs. What we would like to do is offer a blended program, where we're looking at both online and in-person for guided instruction. And then we're also taking into consideration the number of participants, the number of hours, dates of delivery, and cost with that. Also, Act Twenty also requires our leaders to be trained. This would be a six-day face-to-face meeting with a trainer. And our hope is to align our training with the teacher training, because what we'd like to do is have our leaders be, be prepared to be able to support the teachers in their training and what they're going to be learning and doing in the classroom, so.
One thing I'm really excited about, I met with our new special ed director, Mr. Grill, yesterday. And we talked about how he and I, leading the ELMSS system approach in the district, we have a team of school psychologists, leaders, making sure that students are doing well with math and in reading. But my, my, I'm really excited about that collaboration, having the special ed perspective. And that's a different perspective than I have. And I'm going to have an open mind to different approaches to reading, looking at that special ed perspective, making sure all of our students, even students identified with learning disabilities, other barriers, we overcome those barriers. And we're really excited about that work for this next year.
So just a little bit on the professional development piece. Kathy's put a ton of time into researching, so thank you for your work on that. And we worked as a team, just looking at like a variety of different options for this training. Our goal is to lay out a plan that we would, we would be bringing that recommendation to the board, because there, there definitely may be some costs involved with that. So just to know that we are really working on, what is the best plan for our staff? And kind of laying that out in conjunction with our calendar and our in-service and professional development opportunities, and then bringing that recommendation to the board, so that we can have that plan in place. It really would be for this next school year and the following school year. So it's, it's very extensive training that we're looking at, really putting a plan in place for our staff.
And we're confident, thank you, that the board-approved calendar will assist with our work with implementing, not hinder that. So I'm excited to, you know, I'm excited about that work in utilizing the calendar that we've identified.
So with, oh, yeah, perfect. So the, the, the last piece we wanted to really draw your attention to is just the statewide reading screener. And so part of Act Twenty is that there is to be one single reading readiness screener for all learners, four K through third grade. And so we are looking at, you know, what is that going to look like and mean for our students and our, you know, staff that will implement this next year? And when we're looking at this readiness screener, you can see four K, we'd be looking at administering it twice a year, and then our five K through third grade students, three times a year. At this time, the screener, it, it looks like, potentially, DPI is on target to sign a contract with the screener by July one. Okay, so if that happens, then we would look at that screener going into effect of January 2025. If that all moves forward in that timeline, really our hope would be that if we are able to support our staff and, and technology-wise, able to kind of get everything up and running, that we'd like to actually implement it in the fall, so that we could potentially have kind of a trial run before really going full force in January, when it's, needs to be implemented. So, more to come on that. There, there are some, you know, just, until we, we really get the word from DPI on what that's going to be, you know, we, we're ready when, when we learn more, so.
Currently, the DPI does support us with fast bridge, like cost per student. And so the three of us just filled out some paperwork for the state to get reimbursed for that. And I'm hopeful, again, that's the operative word, right? That the state will continue, whatever tool that they choose, that they continue to help offset the cost. There's a cost of that, per student. So, we're working hard with that, too.
Then the next piece, after the screener is administered, then we look at our learners that are twenty, in the twenty-fifth percentile below, I should say that, below the twenty-fifth percentile. And then we give readiness, a readiness screener. So Act Twenty is saying that after that screener, we look at, below the twenty-fifth percentile, we look at those learners, and then we administer reading, a readiness screener. Now, these are our diagnostic reading assessments. And so right at, at this point, DPI is, we do not know what that's going to be, just like we don't know what the reading readiness screener is going to be. So DPI is going to publish and maintain, though, diagnostic reading assessment options for us on their site. So, we have to look forward to that. Once, once that is done, then when we look at all of our learners, we have to create and implement a personal reading plan for each one of those learners who score below the twenty-fifth percentile on the reading readiness screener or the diagnostic assessment. Again, we are not sure what that looks like as of today. And so as soon as we get more information, though, we'll be able to share that with everyone. And we already have future professional development and trainings that we are going to be attending to make sure that we have the most updated information that we possibly can on all of this, to be able to put.
And we're looking forward to that being a new avenue, another, an additional avenue for parent communication and involvement in education. So know that we're planning on parent participation in developing those plans and partnering with the parents on assisting students with their reading.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Well, it's a lot of, lot of information. But we really want to keep the board, you know, just along with us on this journey and, and up to date with the most, you know, recent information. And know that we are committed, we're not in compliance, we are committed to really, you know, the, the reading success of all, of our students.
Thank you for doing this. It's dizzying, right, because they're constantly changing. You know, I've been following along. Do you guys know I have a dyslexic kid? Talk about it all the time.
Never heard of it.
Yeah. So they're doing Act Twenty, right? One in three American fourth graders really read below a basic level. But sometimes I think it helps to know that, you know, when we talk about, well, that's, you know, that could be in Milwaukee, or, you know, like, whatever. But like, no, here in Mozzenee, last year, one hundred and twenty-six, it would have been our kids' grade. Of one twenty-six tested, seventy-six were not proficient in reading. Of the six sixty-six tested in the middle school, four hundred and fifteen were not proficient in reading. Of four hundred and twenty-seven high schoolers tested, two hundred and six were not proficient in reading. We need major changes, and I think, myself as a parent, and many other parents who have reached out to me, we're really impatiently waiting. I know we have to wait for, you know, DPI to, to do their thing. But a lot of districts have already changed. Three years ago, Merrill, Everest, I, I, so I guess that there's a sense of urgency and also a sense of like confusion, like, why haven't we changed longer ago? You know, like, when I met Everest, they're doing written wisdom. And when I asked the principal about it, he said, well, it was three years ago they started it. And at the time, I was a Merrill, and that's when we were doing it. And so I, I do feel frustrated in that sense that other kids were getting scientific, you know, evidence-based learning when our kids weren't. I'm happy it's happening now, you know, it's better late than never. But I, I do wish to see a sense of urgency. I'm, I'm excited to see what curriculums you're going to be looking at. When are you going to be implementing them? Are, are you doing a committee? Like, I think a lot of people are kind of looking around, and they're like, okay, we're like the last remaining soldiers in the battlefield, let's go. So, but yeah, thank you for it.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, other reports. Wasby, Kelly.
That would be me. There is a spring workshop coming in May. We have one in Green Bay. It's navigating today's challenges while keeping a focus on students. Then also, I did get to be a part of the convention with Carla here. I would love to see one-time Mozzenee down at the state convention. Then also, I think it'd be a part of the convention with Carla here. I would love to see one-time Mozzenee down at the state convention. Either the choir, the band, whatever. But that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
I asked last year about it, too. That concludes.
14B, Cisunay Dana.
Okay. So one of the big celebrations was Edgar and their electric bus through a grant. So it'll be interesting to see what happens and how that works out with our climate and everything like that. So, and I have a few connections with Edgar, so I plan on checking that out and seeing how they're doing. Then, as the last action that happened was that Al's contract was secured for another year. So Al Betray will be the Cisunay administrator again.
Okay, thank you. Item 15, future agenda items. Besides the few we have coming back, anything else added on from May?
I was curious, because, you know, with the policy updates, if we could, I think it's gonna be important to update the AI, you know, that's coming in, to update the policy. I know we did a while back in regards to plagiarism. I think it's so much more than that. Megan and I were at a school law conference, and they have talked about it. You know, they had other suggestions. You know, you could form a committee. You know, I would, I would wonder if other schools have done this, or maybe Neola has something. You know, I don't, I'm not sure. Rob would be, but just.
I meet with Ms. over this week.
In regards to, you know.
Yeah. Is that something the board would like to take a look at? Because I meet with her later this week, so I'd be happy to inquire about that.
Since we're going to have the AI and technology update for curriculum next month, let's go see him at the end with that.
Yes, it tied, perfect tie-in, yes.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else? Item 16, movement into closed executive session. The board will convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 19.85, Print 1, Print C, Print E, and Print F for the purposes of considering employment and compensation of any public employee over which the school board has jurisdiction, of which is discussed in public, and would likely to be a substantially adverse effect on the reputation of. Wow.
Keep going.